Okay, good evening, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jim Olstrawski and I work with Eagles Environmental Support Division. Welcome, I'll be the moderator for this afternoon's hearing. I'm glad to see a lot of you have signed in already, that's great. At this point, it looks like you got about 70 people signed in and I'm sure more will start to come on as we get going here. So, welcome to the public hearing. This is the first in a series of public hearings on this issue. This is the Enbridge Line 5 Application for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or MPDS wastewater permit, hearing. So, just to give you a couple of quick reminders, at this point, all lines are muted. It means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you. We'll talk about how we're going to mute the lines later on to take comment. We're also recording the hearing and that recording will be available as soon as we can get it available. Before we kick it off, I want to turn it over to Teresa Seidel, who's the Director of the Water Resources Division, so Teresa, you there?
Good afternoon, thanks for joining us. I simply want to thank you for coming to this afternoon's hearing on the MPDS permit. Jim will give you some overview of how the hearings work, but I want to add to that a little bit. Today is not a comment session, it is your opportunity to place your comments on the record. We will not be responding to you in any way, so I just want to be very clear on that. There'll be myself and two other staff who will be listening in, taking notes while you're talking, so we can make sure we document everything. This is recorded, so you'll have the opportunity to look back at the recording also, but it's the best way that we can capture your comments formally on the record. But please understand that we will not be interacting with you, so that sometimes comes across a little harsh, but we cannot respond to your questions. So, today is really about getting your comments on the proposed MPDS permit application, formally on the record, so thank you for joining us. Well, we know we have a lot of people who have registered that wanted to provide comments today, so we want to make sure we get through all of the comments quickly. Jim will explain the process to you in here in just a moment, but I just simply wanted to hop on and say thank you and we look forward to your comments today so that we can incorporate those into the decision that we make on whether or not to issue a permit for this application. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you Teresa. Before I get into the official reading off the hearing statement and a couple of the guidelines or how we're going to run this, I want to take a minute to introduce the staff that are with here with us today to listen in on your comments and help out. So, all of our staff here turn on your cameras and introduce themselves and we'll start with Christine. Oh, we can't hear you Christine.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, good afternoon, I'm Christine Alexander. I manage Permit Section, the section that's responsible for issuing National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits for the state of Michigan.
Derek?
Hello, everyone. My name's Derek Buckmaster and I supervise the Industrial and Stormwater Permits Unit and Permit Section in the Water Resource Division. My unit's responsible for issuing industrial NPDS permits for facilities throughout the state.
Hey Les?
Yes, my name is Les Smith. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm a Compliance Assistance Specialist, I'll be serving as your hearings co-host today.
Alright, thanks, everybody, and I guess you can turn off your cameras for a minute if you want while we're reading off the statements. So, you might be getting some chat messages from Les throughout the meeting just to kind of give you some important links that you might want to check out. But, for the most part, like Teresa said, we're just going to be listening to your comments. We're not going to be responding or talking to you, which is, I know, kind of weird. But, that's the way the hearings run. So, I'm going to read off the official hearing statement and it is a statement I have to read, so bear with me and then we can get things started. Alright, so, the public hearing today is the first of two public hearings that will be used to take comment on the proposed National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, or MPDS Permit, to Enbridge Energy for the proposed discharge of wastewater from the construction of a proposed tunnel under the lake bed of the Straits of Mackinac. The second public hearing on the MPDS Permit will be on October 6th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The department previously held two public information meetings that included presentations on the proposed construction project and MPDS Permit authorizing wastewater discharges from the project. Recordings of these public meetings are available to be viewed on the michigan.gov/linefive website. In summary, the proposed construction of the tunnel includes two sites, one on the north shore and the other on the south shore of the Straits of Mackinac, with majority of the construction activity taking place at the south shore site. That project will withdraw up to 1.9 million gallons of water per day from the Straits of Mackinac. The requested discharge from Outfall 001 on the south shore is a maximum of 5 million gallons per day, with an expected average of 1.4 million gallons per day of treated construction wastewater. The requested discharge from Outfall 003 on the north shore is a maximum of 1 million gallons per day of treated construction wastewater. The requested discharge from Outfall 002, also on the north shore, is for peak stormwater flows. After construction of the tunnel, the requests changed to discharge treated groundwater seepage with estimated maximum flows of 75,000 gallons per day from the south shore outfall 001 and 1,500 gallons per day from the north shore outfall 003. Also, after construction, a one-time discharge of hydrostatic pressure test water from the south shore outfall 001 as a maximum of 1 million gallons per day. Peak stormwater flows are requested for each of the three outflows for the duration of construction and after construction. All discharges are directed back into the Straits of Mackinac. So, how will the comment process work today? For those of you who pre-registered to attend today's hearing and indicated you would like to make a comment, we will call your name and unmute your microphone so you can make your comment. We will call your name in the order in which you registered. Once we have called the names, everyone who indicated they wanted to make a comment during the registration, we will open it up to comment from other attendees. At that time, if you have not made a comment and wish to do so... Let me save a slide here. Sorry about that. So, at that time, if you have a comment and not made a comment but wish to do so... I'm going to switch my slides here, sorry about that, okay, there we go. Please click the raise hand icon to indicate you wish to make a comment. If you're calling in by phone only, please hit star nine on your phone to raise your hand. We will call on those who have their hand raised to make a comment in the general order in which their hand was raised. Each person will have up to three minutes to make their comment and I will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. If I indicate your time has expired, please wrap up your comments immediately so that we can allow the next person to make their comment. Please be sure to state your name and any organization you represent prior to starting your comment. And please note that we will not be responding to your comments or answering questions during the hearing. We will simply be listening to your comments for the record. If you would like to make a comment but you not wish to make a verbal comment today, you are welcome to submit a written comment to the department. Written comments may be submitted online to our My Waters database and a link is being provided in the chat directly to the comments submitted form. Comments can also be submitted to Jessica Stiles at the following address: Water Resources Division, Eagle, E-G-L-E, PO Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7958, or at the following email address: This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information that Eagle will consider in the proposed National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. Comments received will not be responded to at this time, but will be included in response to public comment documents and be part of the permit record. All comments and information received will be available in My Waters on our online database. The public comment period is open until October 19th, 2020. Okay, so, that's my official comment statement. Just a reminder, as we go through, and I will let you all know, we have 103 people logged in at this moment. And, like I mentioned, we're going to first go through those people who, when they registered, they indicated they wanted to make a comment, so I have a list of those people and I'm looking at it now and we pulled this list at 11 o'clock AM this morning. And, just to let you all know, we have about 50 people who requested ahead of time to make a comment, so we're going to make our way through that list of 50 people. And, like I said in the statement, after we're done with that, then we'll go to the general public, well, to everybody else that's registered today or signed in today. And if you have not made a comment, you'll be able to click the raise hand icon and when you do that, we'll unmute you. For those on the phone, and I see we have about eight or so people on the phone listening in, when we open it up for a comment, for a general comment, after we go through our list, all you do is hit star nine. Hit star nine and that'll raise your hand and we'll unmute your mic. And, just a logistical issue with Zoom is that, right now, you don't see anything because you're not allowed to talk. When we do unmute your mic, be ready because you'll have a mic pop up or a note will pop up that says you've been unmuted. Do you want to unmute your microphone? So, be ready to do that. And what I'm going to do when I read off the names, I'll read off the person that's going to be commenting and then the person who's on deck. So, if you're on deck, just be ready to be called up next. I'll try my best to get through them. Just a reminder, you all have three minutes and I'll be tracking your time and I will break in and let you know when you have a minute left or I will put up my finger that says one minute. So, keep an eye on that and I will let you know when your three minutes are up. And, you know, just a reminder, we've got a lot of people to move through, so please be very... Beware of your time and wrap up within three minutes, I appreciate that. So, with that, you should have gotten some good, I got some chat messages from Les just sent out, some links that I mentioned, so you have that with you. And I will have the staff, if you guys want to turn your cameras back on for listening in to our comments, be good, thank you. And, we're just going to get started with the first name on my list and I'll call off the first one and the person on deck. So, looking at my registration list, the first person who registered and said they wanted to make a comment, their name is June Thaden. And the next person on deck is Leonard Page. And I want to remind you that when we call you up, please repeat your name and any organization you might want that you represent. So, June Thaden, you're up first and you are unmuted. So, go ahead and make your comment and I will start the clock.
Hi, I'm June Thaden, Traverse City, Michigan, representing the Northern Michigan Environmental Action Council, NIMAC. I am opposed to issuing the permit for this tunnel. The tunnel will encounter complex geological formations in the Straits of Mackinac, including poor-quality bedrock fault zones, unconsolidated sediments, and high groundwater pressures. Enbridge is relying on borings every 950 feet, well, 50 to 200 feet is the rule. The boring machine can break down and possibly causing abandonment of the tunnel. If the bedrock over the boring is not sufficient, a sinkhole can occur. The existing West Line 5 pipeline is nearly directly above the tunnel in sight and such a sinkhole could result in catastrophic damage to the pipeline above, carrying 23 million gallons of oil daily. The current larger tunnel being proposed has had no independent risk assessment. The extensive one done several years ago relates to a smaller, very different tunnel. This lury, including bentonite clay, could escape in those 5 million gallons of treated wastewater daily and more during storms. How will this wastewater be treated? What chemicals are going to be used? This is a huge risk to the water of the Straits. Bentonite does not dissipate from the water and forever sticks to whatever it touches, like fish gills, killing all fisheries and destroying our drinking water. Methane has been identified in the groundwater and when in contact with air, could explode in the presence of a spark. Same result if a tiny leak happens after the pipeline is in use. This project does not benefit the people of Michigan and risks our public trust resources for the benefit of a private corporation. I urge Eagle to deny the permit request. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Going to our next person, Leonard Page is the next person up and then Jim Olson will be on deck. So, Leonard Page, we're looking for your name to see if you're available.
Jim, I'm not seeing Leonard Page on the attendee list.
Okay, thanks Les, and just to let people know that when you pre-registered, some people may not actually be logged in, although they've registered, so we may have to move through a few people that didn't log in. So, Jim Olson, is Jim Olson available, Les?
Unfortunately, I do not see Jim Olson in the attendee list.
Alright, thank you, so we're going to go to the next couple people. Denise Trabick Pointer? Denise Trabick Pointer?
Denise, I unmuted her, but her line, her mic is muted.
Okay, Denise Trabick Pointer, we've muted you and you're on our end if you want to mute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes. So, you can go ahead.
Denise Trabick Pointer with Sierra Club Michigan Chapter. I'm a retired 42-plus-year EHS career professional that is extremely concerned about the current and future impact to the Enbridge Line 5 project to people, ecosystems, and the environment. I've worked for a major chemical company in operations in some of those years as a union rep, so I can see all sides of the debate. I believe that most everybody agrees what is currently in the Straits is unacceptable and that a pipe in a tunnel sounds infinitely better than a 67-year-old pipe at the bottom of the lake. However, safe installation and operation of the project is paramount. My view as a chemical engineer with extensive experience in consequence analysis and emergency response is that many things have been missed in preparation and review of the draft NPDS permit, including the following. One, operation of pipeline in a confined space of the tunnel presents a potential risk that even a small leak from the pipeline in a worst-case scenario, that could be built up of combustible gases from pipeline products and an explosion. Stationary gas leak detection equipment and ventilation should be installed at several locations and must be intrinsically safe and currently, this is not included in the project. Two, there's a significant lack of information provided that is specific to this project, for example, water treatment additives, bentonite slurry, and other sealant and flocculant chemicals and safety data. Infiltration and sediment basin design and groundwater flow basis are not included. Information that is provided is boilerplate or generic, including the pollution prevention and emergency response plans. Three, dissolved solids and chlorides limits were removed from the list of required monitoring parameters and are grab and monitor only. Why? There are chemicals or contaminants other than chlorides that it can impact total dissolved solids.
Give one minute.
Carbonates. Eagle should review all chemicals and products and add those to the during and post-construction protective for surface waters. And four, Enbridge will be moving and staging massive amounts of dripping waste containers and fueling equipment on unsurfaced areas specific for unspecified periods of time and the draft permit does not allow for a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And it is Part 201 site on the south side. Enbridge has already contaminated a pristine Michigan property and told us who they are. Eagle should believe them the first time and regulate them for now for insisting, by insisting, a stormwater pollution prevention plan be in this NPDS permit. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so, next two people we have up, Michael Wyszynski, Wilzinski, and Mary Riley. So, Les is going to check if Michael's available?
Michael?
W-I-L-C-Z-Y?
Yes, I don't see him as a current attendee, as registered at the moment.
Okay, and Mary Riley?
R-O-U-L?
R-E-I-L-L-Y, Mary Riley?
No. There are a couple Marys here, but not...
Okay, alright, we're going to keep moving down our list of people who said they wanted to comment and registered when they registered. Isosa Amufwa? That's Isosa, E-S-O-S-A?
I'm muted.
Okay, Isosa Amufwa, Amufwa, you are unmuted on our end, so you can unmute yourself? When we unmute you, you should have either a microphone on your toolbar or a little window that pops up and says that you've been allowed to talk. So, if you want to mute your line, you can. Okay, we will come back to you and we'll see if we can get your microphone working, so I'll make a note in my notes here. We'll go to the next person, Les, Noah Saperstein? Do you see a Noah Saperstein?
There is no Noah presently on the attendee list.
Okay. Going to Sean Hammond. Sean Hammond and Patty Peak, Sean available?
I'm muting Sean Hammond.
Thank you, so Sean, if you want to unmute yourself? Sean, you should have a button on your screen or on your toolbar that allows you to unmute yourself. If your microphone's not working, you might want to check out your audio settings there. Okay, Sean, we'll try to come back to you in a minute so you can check out your audio settings. Les, is Patty Peak there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to allow to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah, so you can go ahead, thank you.
My name is Patty Peak and I'm a full-time resident of San Agnes. My home is at Ground Zero, it's the closest one to the Enbridge proposed North Tunnel project site at Point LeBar. I serve as the Chair of the Straits of Mackinac Alliance. The Citizens Group has many members who live on or near the Straits and like me, will be directly affected by the decisions you will be making. I'm also a retired pediatric nurse practitioner. For the last 25 years, I've been a health volunteer in many resource-poor countries. One of my major roles has been to help communities gain access to potable water and reduce the disease burden of waterborne illness. It's through these experiences that I've gained an uncompromisingly fervent passion to protect our fresh water. I urge you to deny a permit at this time, given the inadequacy of the information that Enbridge has provided. The lack of specificity in many areas is very concerning. Water quality is of the highest priority, yet the permit has no indication of the chemicals that will be discharged into the lake during the construction phase. There is no description of the specific treatment system to be used, nor does it include a plan for containment of a spill either on shore or in the tunnel. There's no mention of the bentonite slurry that will require special processing and plan for spill containment, since release of it would cause irreparable harm. The permit also does not show the specific sighting of the treatment facility and containment ponds. The high lake level and presence of significant wetland on the Enbridge site are concerning as it appears that much of the construction will be very close to the shore, where any type of spill would be catastrophic. Those of us living on the north side rely on well water for drinking, runoff of construction wastewater into our groundwater is a potential issue. What chemicals may be contaminating our wells? This is a particular concern, given the high lake levels. The wastewater discharge outflow will be in 10 feet of water in less than a football field length from shore. The prevailing surface current here is west-southwest. This means the wastewater discharge will most likely be dispersed among the shallows in the north shore. The shore here is a marshy home to spawning fish, small amphibians, other aquatic species, and many shorebirds and waterfall. We have eagles nesting in the area.
One minute.
All of these species would be at risk for any contamination of the water. Eagle depends on the owner of projects to reliably self-monitor and self-report when issues arise. Why would the state of Michigan place our valuable fresh water in the hands of a company that has regularly withheld information about problems with their operations? I wish I could say I trust Enbridge to do everything to keep our water safe, but, given their past performance, I simply can't. I urge Eagle to stand up for the waters you are about to protect. Please deny the permit for wastewater discharge into our most precious resource. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I do see a couple of people did send me some responses saying they didn't want to comment, so that's fine, through the Q&amp;A button, if I do call your name and you don't want to comment, you can type, just send me a note via the Q&amp;A function. Thank you. Moving on, so Les, the next name on my list is Tamara Upham and then Jim Weidman, Tamara, T-A-M-A-R-A?
Tamara is not listed in the attendee list.
Okay, she's not in attendance, so next up is Jim Weidman, W-E-I-D-M-A-N?
Jim is not listed amongst the attendees.
Okay, thank you. Going through our list, Catherine Daliga?
I'm muting Catherine.
Thank you, so...
I'm here, am I up?
Yes, you are, thank you, go ahead.
You find my document, alright. My name's Catherine Daliga, I'm a lifelong resident of southeastern Michigan, currently a homeowner in Ypsilanti. I wish to thank Eagle for hosting this hearing. I'm speaking today to oppose issuing this permit to Enbridge Energy and to stress the principles that give rise to the vehement opposition you're hearing from me and many others. We have regrettably few mechanisms through which we Michigan citizens can insist on proper consideration in a timely way of at least some of the externalities of major infrastructure projects. This is especially important now as substantial green energy investment becomes increasingly urgent. The state permitting processes involving Eagle and the MPSC constitute rare opportunities to demand the fullest possible evaluation of the risks of a major utility development compared to its benefits. The half-billion dollars Enbridge expects to spend to build their tunnel project is pocket change, when compared to the financial exposure we as Michigan citizens and taxpayers would have in the case of a tunnel failure. While this larger issue may not directly concern wastewater treatment, it is nevertheless important and legitimate to take advantage of every chance to consider the implications of such a project. The core lesson we should take away from the natural disasters we've seen this year all around the country is this: Nowhere is safe from the ravages of climate change. Michigan already sees effects of global warming in the sectors of recreation, public works, forestry, and agriculture. Rising lake levels, proliferating insect infestations, and increase in extreme weather, including the polar vortex events that have devastated our stone fruit orchards, are all taking a toll on our state right now. The actions that we take collectively today are already rear-guard actions to mitigate, not reverse, the impact of unsafe levels of atmospheric CO2. We can slow this... We can slow this railway train, but only if we decide to apply the brakes now. The risks of environmental damage occasioned by rupture of line five resting on the lake bed are not eliminated by constructing a tunnel to carry this liquefied petroleum product instead. They're merely translated into risk of incurred during tunnel construction and tunnel operation. How will damages be calculated if this bentonite winds up contaminating the water and coastline near the excavation sites affecting municipal water supplies as well as compromising fishing, recreation, and habits of the creatures that depend on relatively clean water? Consider the Kirtland's warbler a formerly endangered species which now nests in multiple areas adjoining the Straits. This species was recently delisted thanks to decades of work on the part of thousands of people. Putting the species at risk again would mean all that effort had gone for naught. Enbridge has no direct accountability to anyone but their shareholders. They have no vested interest in doing anything but making a fast buck at our expense. It remains up to us and to you to tell the no, and that's my fundamental point. Obligation, Enbridge has no obligation to defend the public interest, but you do. Please fulfill.
It's three minutes.
... in the Great Lakes region. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm seeing a few people are typing comments into the questions box. If you do have a comment, you want to, like a written comment you want to submit, I want to remind you that in the chat box, there's a link that you can go directly to, to submit a comment into My Waters. And if you're on the phone and you want to submit a comment, you know, and if, you know, because you can't see the link and it's really long, it'd be hard for you to write it down. The email address to send the comments to is e g l e dash Enbridge dash comments at Michigan dot gov. For those of you online, you should see all those in the chat box. All right, going on to the next person who is on our list here, it's Glenna Raleigh, Glenna Raleigh. Then after Glenna is Barbara Schneider.
I do not have Glenna.
Is Barbara Schneider in attendance?
I do not have Barbara Schneider.
Okay, I'll keep going. Hannah Apps. And after Hannah Apps is John Woodward. Is John Woodward available?
No, John Woodward also.
Okay. And for those of you that are joining us a little bit late here, just want to let you know that what we're doing right now is we're going through a list of people who pre-registered and indicated they wanted to make a comment. Some of those people might have registered but are not actually in attendance. So that's why we're not seeing them pop up. Next person that said they wanted to make a comment in registration was Michael Boza.
I'm muting Mr. Boza.
Hi, my name is Mike Boza, I live in Sports Creek, Michigan, and I want to say that I am definitely against the building of the tunnel for line five. They're requesting to release up to 5 million gallons a day of treated water back into Lake Michigan and during storming times, they're talking about 14 million gallons. I am not aware of the, the composition of what's being discharged into the lake. This could be highly toxic material for all we know because they have not presented this to us. The, the other thing is, we don't even, I know, is there any monitoring to the amount of things? They say 5 millions, but could it be 10 million? So I have some hype, I find this highly questionable. This is a very valuable resource. And this is a, this, this resource is, is this, the endangering of this resource is in favor of, entirely in favor of Enbridge and very minimal if any to the, to the citizens of Michigan. Of the other thing that I think we need to, to take in account is that with this risky project from Enbridge, a company that has proven in the past that it is not trustworthy, is that, you know, how long will this be, resource be of value? So we're taking a big risk for resource that may not be of value in the long term. I mean, the long-term prospects of oil, for oil being used is diminishing. And, you know, we're, we're taking this big risk for, for, for a diminishing resource. So that is the extent of my comment. I thank you for allowing me to comment and I want to say that I am definitely against this project. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next person on my list is Rachel Hu, H U. And after Rachel is Laura Judge.
I'm muting Rachel.
Okay, hi. I'm sorry. I'm 16 and I live in Metro Detroit and I'm representing Michigan Youth Activism Society and I oppose the issuing the permit for the Enbridge Oil Tunnel. So first of all, the project provides extremely little benefit for us. The oil tunnel only benefits the private corporation of Enbridge itself. Enbridge has proven over and over again that they cannot be trusted because we have seen before in the past, the consequences that happen from Enbridge's like past oil spills and past mistakes. I think everyone remembers the Kalamazoo oil spill where over a million gallons of oil were spilled and this cost us over a billion dollars to clean up and we're still cleaning it up today, so we're cleaning up after Enbridge. And ultimately, this shows that we can see what happens when we prioritize the agenda of a private company over the lives of Michiganders ourselves. So in addition, the oil tunnel is also extremely dangerous. If the water in the Straits become contaminated, this would be detrimental to our drinking water, affect our communities, cost a lot of money and time and resources to repair the damages. And the policies you're putting in place today is going to be affecting not just you guys, but also me, my generation and my community, and we're going to be the ones cleaning up after it and we can't allow this mess to happen right now. And so overall, the risks this tunnel poses for the public is not worth it because this project provides extremely little benefit for us and I confidently advise Eagle to reject this permit request. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, next person is Laura Judge. And after Laura Judge is Abigail O'Connell. Do we have a Laura Judge, Les?
I'm muting Laura Judge.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Laura Judge from the Holland area on the west side of the state, just a private citizen. With the myriad of chemical ecological degradation risk to the waters and the land surrounding the Straits of Mackinac, the risk from the construction equipment and the wastewater discharge from the approval of this permit are just so massive that they should not be approved. The permit should not be approved. Why would Eagle want to take the risk for what will soon be a stranded asset to our ecological system here in Michigan? The financial markets have recently really been, begun to recognize the risk of these fossil fuel related projects and an Enbridge tunnel in general, the whole project is not aligned with Michigan's long-term climate goals. So I just beseech you to do not approve of this permit for the wastewater portion of this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Abigail O'Connell is next, and then after Abigail O'Connell is Scott Lowe. So Abigail O'Connell?
Yep. Hi, my name's Abigail O'Connell and I live in junior at Northville High School and I'm the head of the Michigan Youth Activism Writing and Research Team. I run in today with the Sierra Club of Michigan in order to represent and speak on behalf of the youth voice and others here today. In recent months, I've become increasingly alarmed by the damage to Michigan from line five and I have worked in protesting and speaking up against line five. As a Michigan, opposed to issuing the NPDS permit for many reasons. Firstly, the release of up to 5 million gallons a day of untreated slash or wastewater back into Lake Michigan on the south shore, I find it is dangerous because of pollution and the fact permit has failed to outline clear treatment procedures, if any, for the wastewater return. Secondly, with the permit, the release of such wastewater would harm not only using such water, but the great tourism industry of pure Michigan. It brings into question how here's our water if turned back by such a permit. The permit itself poses too many questions with confusion and not enough concerns for Michigan's residents. The research permit fails to identify how irresponsible it would be for state to move forward further, how analysis considerations for the environmental impact, and with line five tunnel plans still incomplete. Additionally, the project presents quite a larger danger if a situation like a pinhole leak of natural gas inside the completed tunnel presents itself, causing an explosion and risking the lives of Michiganders trying to clear up such an issue. Leaks within the tunnel have occurred in the past and it isn't safe for anyone to safely drill through the Straits of Mackinac without further research into its difficult geological formations, which Enbridge has failed to accomplish. Generally speaking, Enbridge has failed in past to inform Michiganders of their plans and of the data posed and occurred from line five. They have made other claims about gas prices of the benefits from line five. With that, whose dis won't perpetuate much to Michigan, the permit is passed. It must be considered with current damage and future damage proposed, the prime issues that we are leaving our youth and next generation Michiganders like myself, who will have to work increasingly harder in order to protect our natural waters and the safety of our communities and state. I am asking e g l e again that the NP permit request in order to uphold our state's true values. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, thank you. And Abigail O'Connell, you did break up a couple times during your presentation. I don't know if there was an internet issue on your end or what, but I recommend it maybe if you have written comments, you have those comments written down to, go ahead and email them to us as well, just so we make sure we get, get them full. So you should have the email address as well as the My Waters link on your chat. Thanks. All right, so Les, the next person I have on my list is Scott Lowe, and then after Scott Lowe is Monica Knowles. Go ahead, Scott. Scott, you are unmuted, Scott Lowe.
Is it okay now?
Yes, okay, we can hear you now, go ahead.
Anything?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah, Scott, we can hear you if you're there.
Is it working?
Yes, it is.
I can't hear you now.
Okay. Okay, Scott, we're going to come back to you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can, all right, so Les, we'll come back to Scott. And maybe you want to send him a note, let him know we'll come back to him because he can't.
Okay, is this working now? Anything?
Yeah. All right, so Les, why don't you go ahead and mute Scott and we'll come back to him. And we will go now to Monica Knowles. Monica Knowles, you can go ahead, Monica Knowles.
Hello, I am, I'm Monica Knowles and I live in Yanover, Michigan, and I am against line five proposal by Enbridge. Enbridge has, as everyone has said, has done nothing to make us think that they would make this right. And the reality is, you can't make this right. If there is a problem, you can't put that genie back in the bottle. You can't fix the 47 potential, you can't bring back the 47 potential species that would be destroyed. You can't fix the 400 miles of shoreline, you can't fix the potential 60,000 acres that are endangered. Enbridge says they're going to put up 1.9 billion dollars in case, in case there's a problem, which of course they can't fix, and that's less than 4% of their annual revenue. So this is a sneeze to them, probably wouldn't even hit the, hit the cash flow. And that's what they're saying it's worth to them. And yet, we are risking the future, for future generations, the largest resource of fresh water in North America and the 21st largest resource for fresh water in the world. Again, you cannot put that genie back in the bottle, you can't fix it. And for all those people that say, well, it's virtually impossible, it was virtually impossible for 50 million people to lose power in 2003 and yet they did. Who would guess that somebody would sneeze in China and it would shut down the world due to COVID? So miniscule doesn't really register with me. I think if there is a potential, then there is a problem and you are playing Russian roulette with the largest resource of fresh water in the north, in North America. Thank you for your time and please, please vote no on this.
Okay, thank you. And yes, go ahead.
Want to try Scott again?
Okay, yeah, so let's go back to Scott.
Yeah, is this working now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Scott Lowe, I live in Traverse City and have summered by Lake Michigan for the last 60 years. I urge Eagle in the state of Michigan to deny Enbridge's N T D E S wastewater permit request. I've been told the committee's mandate is to consider specific technical details. The big picture is not your main focus. Fair enough, but surely you realize that with each apparently reasonable little step, we're moving closer to a catastrophe for a huge percentage of this continent's surface freshwater. Over the last year, incredible heaps of trash have been washing ashore on Lake Michigan beaches, the apparent consequence of unprecedented high water sweeping away docks, furniture, decks, and homes that everyone assumed would last for decades, even centuries. The Great Lakes are unpredictable, wild, and currently on the rise. Enbridge's plans do not seem to recognize this. The last thing the Great Lakes need is a daily discharge of 5 million gallons or more of wastewater. Enbridge suggests that perhaps 14 million gallons a day could be released during a storm. How was this figure reached? Given Enbridge's horrible track record and its poorly detailed, half-formed, and recently expanded tunnel plans, common sense requires us to assume the worst. I don't have the technical background to refute all of Enbridge's assertions, but I can recognize a poorly constructed, incomplete, and inadequate proposal when I see one. It's essential to deny these permits, given that Enbridge has failed to address even the most basic questions citizens have asked. What exactly will be released in its wastewater? We know bentonite, which is just horrible, but what else? What damage will these chemicals and particulates do to our drinking water, our fisheries, our beaches, our boating, our tourist industry? What impacts will the effluvia have on property values and animal health? What will be the consequences for the health of our children? How will Enbridge secure its treatment ponds against extreme weather conditions to prevent catastrophic spills? I certainly don't know what the lakes will be doing in the future and it's clear that Enbridge doesn't either. Oil was the main economic driver of the 20th century, but in the 21st century, water will be the world's most prized resource. To risk the destruction of our water, our future, to prop up a wildly polluting industry that's facing inevitable decline simply does not make logical, environmental, or economic sense. The people of Michigan don't want it. Again, I urge you to deny all permits that advance Enbridge's pursuit of this ill-conceived tunnel. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next person up is Bambi Perry. And after Bambi Perry is Christine Barrett.
I do not find a Bambi Perry or a Christine, or Christine.
Yeah, so Christine with a K?
Yes.
Okay, all right, moving down then, Charlie Weaver. Then after Charlie Weaver is Fran Hamilton.
No Charlie Weaver, and I'm unmuting Fran Hamilton.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Fran Hamilton and I'm a concerned citizen living in Holland, Michigan. And there's been just, I agree with all of the wonderful comments that have been expressed today. I'm very opposed to you issuing this permit. I don't really have anything more to add to the comments, except that I highly ask, I highly recommend or highly ask that you deny the proposed permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going down, Jean Blair. Then after Jean Blair is Shannon O'Brien. Then after Jean Blair is Shannon O'Brien. It's Jean with J E A N.
Yes, I don't have a Jean Blair. Moving on to Shannon. I do not have a Shannon O'Brien.
Okay, thanks, Les. Just want to remind everybody what we're doing, if you joined a little bit late, is that at this point, we are going down the names of people who registered to attend the hearing, and in the registration said they wanted to make a comment. If they registered and did not, and are not attending, then, then that's what we're doing, is they're, they're not in attendance, which, which happens. Okay, so after Shannon O'Brien, Rita Mitchell.
I do not find Rita Mitchell.
Okay, Rita Mitchell, after Rita Mitchell, we have Ed DeRosa.
I'm muting Ed DeRosa.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Ed DeRosa, and I'm a concerned citizen residing in Limsburg, Michigan. First, I want to express my application to Eagle for providing me and fellow Michigan citizens with this opportunity to voice our concerns regarding this permit application. Decision whether or not to issue this permit has the potential to have dramatic implications to the environmental integrity, public health, and economic security of our state for generations to come. The purpose of my comment today is not to speak to the many technical considerations and challenges that a petroleum transport tunnel beneath the Straits of Mackinac surely implies. I'm not a geologist or an engineer, so I leave vote, leave it to those who have such expertise to give their opinions and suggestions regarding the risk assessment and safety of this proposed tunnel project. Rather, I speak as a parent, potential grandparent, and advocate for the many non-human species that share our region but cannot speak for themselves. Like much of the public, I have spent most of my life blissfully unaware of the hazards represented by Enbridge Pipeline 5. I grew up not knowing that a pipeline transporting petroleum fuels had been in operation in the turbulent confluence of Lakes Michigan and Huron since a year before I was born in 1954. In fact, it was not until the disastrous spill of Enbridge's Pipeline 6 in 2010 that I started to become aware of the risks and consequences of petroleum pipeline spills. In subsequent years, I learned about the existence of Enbridge Pipeline 5 and its route extending not only through the Straits of Mackinac, but also through and beneath wetlands across both upper and lower peninsulas of our state. I also became educated regarding the pipeline's abysmal safety record and the glaring disparity that exists between its minimal importance to Michigan's economy and energy needs compared to the tremendous environmental and economic risks that we assume with its continued operation.
One minute.
It should be appreciated that even a successful event-free installation of a tunnel beneath the Straits of Mackinac would do nothing to address the growing risk to Michigan's interior wetlands posed by, posed by this aging pipeline. Given that we have already seen over two dozen documented leaks from this pipeline, we really want to continue taking the risk of yet another catastrophic spill, such as occurred in the Kalamazoo River watershed. It's not a question of whether another spill will occur, but rather when, where, and how much. We're now beginning to confront the health, environmental, and economic consequences associated with over 200 years of reliance on fossil fuels. Policy to accelerate the transition from petroleum to alternative energy sources is overdue. At this point, wouldn't it make sense to invest our limited time and resources developing an economy based on cheap, reliable, and truly sustainable renewable energy sources instead of dithering whether to continue supporting the profits of a foreign corporation at our own peril for no good reason?
That's three minutes, sir.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And Les, we're gonna go back to Rita Mitchell, she is there, she got her hand raised, I can see it.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you, Rita, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Rita Mitchell, I live in Ann Arbor, Michigan. I'm a lifelong resident of Michigan and grew up being a part of the Great Lakes, I feel. And I just want to call attention, this seems obvious perhaps, but Eagle, the environment, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy represents what's happening in the issue that you're considering with line five. So you're at the nexus of all of those things. The environment that can be harmed by the pipeline, the Great Lakes at this major connection point, and the energy that, that Enbridge is trying to push through this pipeline and has for 67 years. It's time to retire the pipeline, and it's time to just drop the consideration of a tunnel because we should be moving on to clean energy, as others have said today. I want to just point out another thing that may be somewhat repetitive, but it's still important to know that the pipeline that's being proposed represents a danger to local water supplies, a danger to workers who may be installing that tunnel, a danger to the environment and wildlife, and a danger to businesses and tourism of the state. We cannot, we're just at a point in the midst of a pandemic where we really should be trying our hardest to keep our water clean, and that's what I implore you to do, and I ask you to reject the tunnel proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next person to call up is Geraldine Tucker. Then after Geraldine Tucker is Sean McBrady.
I will be unmuting Sean, Sean.
Thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sean McBrady, and I'm the Michigan Legislative and Policy Director for Clean Water Action, the campaign coordinator for oil and water don't mix. I'm here today to oppose the issuing of the permit based on several key grounds. First off, Eagle should not even consider issuing this permit before receiving from Enbridge a full listing of all the chemicals that will be used in the tunnel drilling process. We know that the drilling mud will be mainly bentonite, but often different additives are used to improve the drilling mud, and without knowing what will be used for this specific project, Eagle can't possibly be confident in plans for properly treating those chemicals to remove them from wastewater. Bentonite alone is a major potential problem. The current plans call for open wastewater ponds on both the north and south sides of the straits where wastewater would be stored prior to treatment. This wastewater will contain bentonite from the drilling mud. With the increasing frequency and severity of storms due to climate change, it should be expected that these ponds will overflow into Lake Michigan, and in major storms, this permit would allow up to 14 million gallons a day of wastewater to be released. Any bentonite release into Lake Michigan would be catastrophic for the Great Lakes ecosystem and aquatic populations. Bentonite and water would cope plants and fish gills, killing much of the diverse aquatic life present in the Straits of Mackinac and devastating the most productive tribal fishery in Michigan. During your public information session, I asked how the bentonite would be separated from wastewater, and my question was passed off to an Enbridge PR person who couldn't answer the question. To date, no one has been able to ident, to definitively tell me how the bentonite would be separated from wastewater, especially during stormy weather, and we know that a bentonite release would be very harmful to one of the most pristine parts of the whole Great Lakes region. There are many more problems with the Niptis permit and the resource permit that couldn't possibly be addressed in three minutes of verbal comments, but the bottom line here is that Enbridge is not prepared for this project and has even cut corners in their permit applications. Time and again, Enbridge has shown us that they can't be trusted. The Kalamazoo oil spill showed as much. The way they blatantly lied to the state for years about the condition of line five itself has showed as much. And the lack of detail in these permit requests is another example of Enbridge showing us all that they can't be trusted.
One minute.
Thank you. The role of this department is not to blindly issue permits regardless of the consequences to our national resources. An agency that simply rubber stamps major harmful projects like this one is of no use to the people of Michigan. The role of Eagle is to protect our environment and our Great Lakes, not Enbridge's bottom line. We're counting on you to do the right thing and deny these permit requests immediately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just hey, Les, could you please confirm that Geraldine Tucker is not in attendance?
I have gone through the list, and I will double check here. Geraldine with a J is not in the attendee list.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next two people I have up are Mike Alamo, and then the next one up is Susan Wearden.
Great, thank you so much for your time today, appreciate Eagle hosting this very important public comment period. My name is Mike Alamo, I'm the Director of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Michigan Chamber of Commerce. Michigan Chamber has long been in favor of reasonable and necessary regulation of oil and gas pipelines to protect the Great Lakes, public health, and the environment. For that reason, we strongly support Enbridge Energy and the proposed type pipeline tunnel under the Straits of Mackinac. The Michigan Chamber of Commerce is Michigan's leading statewide business advocacy association, and on the job every day standing up for job providers. The chamber is the unified voice of over 5,000 member employers, trade associations, local chambers of commerce of every size and type in all 83 counties of the state. The Great Lakes Tunnel is without question the most practical, long-term solution for delivering a secure energy supply to the region while enhancing environmental safeguards in the Straits of Mackinac. We also are pleased that the $500 million project is going to be funded entirely by Enbridge without a dime of taxpayer dollars. The tunnel will replace a portion of line five, the twin pipelines that cross beneath the straits along the bottom of the lakebed. It truly delivers the fuel that helps keep homes warm and Michigan's economy moving. According to independent studies, the tunnel will make the risk of an oil spill from line five in the straits virtually zero. The project will create hundreds of skilled trades jobs and project, and protect thousands more in industries across Michigan. In fact, the tunnel project will supply the fuel that supports more than 47,000 direct and indirect jobs in our state, hundreds of millions of dollars in capital investment, tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue our communities rely on, and more. Environmental impacts of tunnel construction have been greatly minimized, and construction and operations will not disturb the lake bottom or affect any aquatic wildlife and sediment. All water necessary to support the construction and operation of the tunnel will be treated and monitored prior to onsite discharge. There will be water withdrawals and treated wastewater discharge as part of the project, but it won't be continuous, and all wastewater will be treated in accordance with all applicable state standards and guidelines. Placing the tunnel deep under the lakebed provides multiple layers of protection, safeguarding the straits area from the risk of an oil spill, protecting our Great Lakes ecosystem, and mitigating wetland impacts. In fact, in fact, the application makes clear that Enbridge has reduced wetland impacts from more than 20 acres down to one tenth of an acre. Each of these steps is important for chamber members who count on the lakes and tourism for both their lifestyles and their livelihoods. The tunnel also represents the most safest, most affordable way to transport fuel. Numerous, numerous studies of delivery alternatives, including those commissioned by the state of Michigan, have found no better way than line five to provide the energy needed in the Upper Peninsula and across the state. Again, thank you so much for the time, appreciated very much, and I see the floor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Susan Wearden in attendance, and after Susan Madsen.
Sorry, don't have a Susan or a Mads.
Okay, we'll move down then to Mary Myers.
I'm reading Mary.
Hello, my name's Mary Myers, I'm the Director of Business Development at the Lake Superior Community Partnership, also the LSCP. The LSCP is a private-public partnership in Market County, Michigan, whose mission is focused on the promotion and advancement of economic and community development. We are an accredited economic development organization through the International Economic Development Council and serve as Market County's leading resource for economic development. The LSCP is committed to facilitating job creation, retaining existing business, assisting with business growth, and attracting new businesses to our region. Our partner businesses, 400 strong, are committed to this mission through the investment of time and resources. We urge you to support this permit application as the utility corridor is the most practical, long-term solution to deliver a secure energy supply to the residents and businesses of the Upper Peninsula. The following points further solidify our point as line five continues to be a critical resource. 540,000 barrels per day of propane and crude oil supply for the Michigan and surrounding areas that make up the regional supply network for the state producing transportation fuels and consumer goods ranging from computers to clothing and cell phones. Serves approximately 65% of propane used in the Upper Peninsula and Northern Michigan for which no viable alternative exists. Supplies Michigan and regional refineries that provide Michigan with various fuels that Michigan residents rely on in their day-to-day lives. For examples, these refineries served by line five supply a large percentage of the aviation fuel at Detroit's Metropolitan Airport, which is an important contributor to the state's economy. I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that Enbridge pays approximately $2.7 million in taxes in the Upper Peninsula, and over 60 million statewide, supporting many services provided to the US, or provided by us in our local municipalities. The proposed concrete wall tunnel is to be placed approximately 100 feet below the lakebed, reducing the risk of a spill in the straits to zero, and Enbridge has committed to pay the construction and operation of the tunnel, allowing for the project to move quickly. The environmental impacts of, of the tunnel construction have been greatly minimized, and construction and operation will not disturb the lake bottom or affect any aquatic wildlife and sediment. Also, water use for the construction is minimal as an amount of equal to two-size Olympic-sized swimming pools each day and treated to safely recycle and return to the waters of the straits where it came from. Because of these reasons, we do urge you to support the Great Lakes Tunnel Permit Application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next person up for comment, Lisa Petrell.
Hello?
Okay, you're, you're unmuted.
I represent Washtenaw 350 today. I, it, in listening to the informational webinars that Eagle has been hosting, and I thank you for those, it seems that Eagle is negligent of its duty and should not go forward with this permit. We urge you to deny this permit. Here are several examples on the September 8 webinar. It seems that not all the staff of Eagle holds the same body of information. Once, one quest, one speaker was asking about whether it was going, this tunnel was going to go through silt, and they were specifically answered it was going through bedrock. That's not the current body of information that was revealed from the 20 whirrings that Eagle completed. This tunnel will go through what's called a mixed face as well as bedrock. Another question came up about what was, how were the toxic chemicals going to be handled? And Eagle responded that they did not have all the information from Enbridge at this point to answer that question. How can Eagle approve a permit when they can't do their obligation to inform the public fully of, of the process and what's going to be in the permit? There also seems to be a number of incongruencies. Some of the early slides in the web info described how it was going to be the solids that were going to be removed. Now, that leaves a lot of fogginess around whether suspended particles are solids or not, addressing bentonite and the mud and the other chemicals. But chemicals themselves, including the methane that's going to be encountered in the groundwater, those aren't solids. And if it's not in the permit specifically, how various elements that are going to be introduced to this effluent, be part of this effluent that's going to be introduced into our surface water, then it is not something that can be followed through, upheld, or we can't hold Enbridge's feet to the fire if the, if it's not in the permit.
Give one minute.
I would like to urge Enbridge that the age of agency negligence is coming to an end. Judge Judith Levy in the Eastern District Court has ruled not to dismiss the case against the EPA in the Flint water crisis. This, the introduction of this effluent into Lake Michigan exposes Eagle as well as the EPA to a whole nother area. I also want to urge that the tribes have I also want to urge that the tribes have not, if the tribes have not been directly contacted, consulted concerning this permit, then that constitutional duty has not been informed. If the municipalities who have to handle the effluent that's going to be fed into their municipal water systems have not been notified, that is...
That's three minutes?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, just to let everybody know, we've still got about 13 more names to work through here on our list of people who had pre-registered and wanted to make a comment. And after we do that, we'll go to open it, and for those that still want to make a comment that haven't done so, you'll be able to raise your hand at that time in case you're still waiting. And just want to remind people too, that when you're called out to make a comment, you'll want to unmute your mic and make sure you restate your name in any group or organization that you might represent. Okay, Les, so the next people we have on our list, Mark Griffin and then Joe Stevens. Mark Griffin, you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Mark Griffin, President of the Michigan Petroleum Association and the Michigan Association of Convenience Stores. We strongly support construction of the proposed pipeline tunnel under the Straits of Mackinac between Mackinac City and St. Ignace by Enbridge Energy. We encourage the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to provide all needed approvals as soon as possible for any permit applications to build the Great Lakes Tunnel. NPA Max represents the state's independent petroleum marketers, the state's convenience store industry as well. We take great pride in our state, our lakes, and the jobs we provide. We're truly neighbors serving neighbors. We're also part of a unique coalition of the state's leading labor and business voices that are part of the Great Lakes Michigan Jobs Coalition. We're all speaking out in support of the Great Lakes Tunnel. These workers and employers rely on the fuel safely delivered by Line 5 Pipeline and are convinced that construction of the Great Lakes Tunnel represents the best, safest, and most scientifically sound method to deliver that fuel into the future. This unique coalition recognizes that with today's technology, the Great Lakes Tunnel will help deliver an enhanced level of safe, reliable energy along with measures to protect our waterways for generations. The tunnel is a $500 million infrastructure project, all paid by Enbridge to safely secure the state's energy future. We have no doubt that with Eagle and Enbridge working closely together, this tunnel can be built and will be investment to Michigan's future. That investment matters. So do more than the 47,000 workers statewide who rely on the fuel delivered by Line 5. The commitment to safely deliver that fuel matters as well. Previously, the state of Michigan studied the proposed tunnel and found that the risk of a spill from the tunnel was unquantifiably low. In our industry, those safety standards are critical. They mean continuous access to the material we need to support and create Michigan jobs and to meet the needs of our customers. We believe the Great Lakes Tunnel is the most important infrastructure project under development in Michigan when we encouraged by the care and evidence that Enbridge has taken to approach the permit application process. Now, some people either do not realize it or perhaps choose not to, but we all depend on Line 5 every day. If we all work together, we can build this tunnel and keep Line 5 serving the region. Thank you, and please approve all the permits necessary for this tunnel to be built. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Joe Stevens, and after Joe Stevens is Whitney Gravel.
Do not have a Joe Stevens.
Okay, Whitney Gravel.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Whitney Gravel. I am the tribal attorney for Bay Mills Indian Community. I offer these comments on behalf of the sovereign nation of Bay Mills. Bay Mills Indian Community is a signatory of the 1836 Treaty of Washington, which ceded territory to the United States for the creation of the state of Michigan. In that treaty, Bay Mills reserved the right to fish, hunt, and gather throughout the ceded territory, including the Great Lakes and the Straits of Mackinac. The United States Constitution states that "all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land." Currently, Eagle lacks sufficient detail regarding Enbridge's tunnel design and lacks sufficient information on how to mitigate the harmful impacts that will result from its construction. Enbridge has significantly changed the project design from what was evaluated by the state of Michigan in the prior alternatives risk assessment and is still not answered the pressing questions from tribal nations on how Enbridge will remove bentonite clay from the slurry waters prior to discharge. Bentonite clay sticks to everything it touches, much like oil, and will result in a massive fish kill throughout the Straits of Mackinac, which is a resource protected by treaty. As a sovereign government with responsibility for managing and protecting the Great Lakes, Bay Mills Indian Community opposes placement of Line 5 in a tunnel beneath the Straits of Mackinac because it lengthens the life of a corroded, dented, aging pipeline that is an immediate threat to the vast ecosystem of the Great Lakes, a threat to the treaty-protected rights of tribes, a threat to the cultural resource that is the Straits of Mackinac, and provides limited value to our state's families and businesses. Our people, the Nishnabe, have a teaching that says the decisions we make today should result in a sustainable world seven generations into the future. It reminds us to understand that the decisions we make are not limited by the immediate concerns of today, but instead have implications long after we are gone. We urge the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to adopt this teaching as well and evaluate all of the risks and harms Line 5 poses to all 645 miles the pipeline runs throughout the state of Michigan and also evaluate what this decision will really mean for the future of everyone.
Give one minute.
Given the risk and harms to species, economy, wetlands, water quality, cultural resources, and tribal treaty rights, which are the supreme law of the land, this is a pipeline that should be decommissioned as quickly as possible. Nigwich, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Kate Ecketer, and then Tristan Cole. Last, we got Kate.
We do not have Kate, but we have Tristan.
Well, hello. Thank you very much for doing this hearing. This has been very interesting, listening to all of the emotions that are surrounding the utility corridor here in the Straits of Mackinac. As a state representative and majority floor leader in the state legislature, I've been privy to many conversations and have had the opportunity to tour where Line 5 enters and exits currently on the Straits of Mackinac and ask many questions and have received very detailed answers. I've also toured the building that's holding the bore samples, the coring that was drilled out of the straits as Enbridge was looking into completing this project. I would encourage and remind the department that you have an obligation to promptly issue these permits once all aspects have been met and fulfilled, and to do that sooner rather than later. Now, I'd like to address the fact that Line 5 is vital to Michigan. In my five-county district, Charlotte, Lloyd, Antrim, Montsego, Mount Rensie, and Oscoda, we have an injection site over in Lewiston where locally-produced, extracted oil and gas is put into or injected into Line 5, a direct benefit to my district and Northern Michigan and the economy. Enbridge pays hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in taxes for the properties that the pipeline currently crosses. Now, let's talk about the environment, and let's talk about the impact on birds, animals, fish, and whatnot. Edge habitat is extremely important, and it was mentioned earlier, the Kirtland Warbler. Edge habitat is vital to the survival of the warbler. Edge habitat is created along these pipeline corridors and actually benefits the survival of many of our species here, both game and non-game across Michigan. When it comes to the water treatment, the treated water being put back into Lake Michigan once all the harmful components have been stripped and it is clean. I've visited multiple of the energy producers in Michigan, and all of those locations are meccas for wildlife, including eagles and fish. So I would just like to remind the department to please issue this, follow the requirements by law, and issue these permits once everything has been satisfied. And I would just encourage people to ask more questions of boots-on-the-ground folks here in Northern Michigan that are directly impacted. Line 5, the utility corridor, is vital to Michigan and extremely important, and I just would encourage you to issue the permit promptly. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Les, next person up is Ray Anderson. Then after Ray Anderson, we've got Mary Pelton Cooper.
I don't have a Ray Anderson listed as an attendee.
Okay, Mary Pelton Cooper.
I'm muting Mary Pelton Cooper.
Yes, Mary Pelton Cooper, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I am a former public health nurse from the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, and I am a citizen activist in the UP. And I just want to throw in this thought, the myth that the UP is dependent on Line 5 for heating and cooking is not true. There are reasonable sources, and pushing this myth is not helping. The goal of this huge new tunnel project was to protect the straits from contamination by an oil spill. Now, we find that the new construction of this tunnel will include pollution of that same water. Eagle must require Enbridge to produce in advance a precise list of exactly which slurry substances and additives will be discharged into the straits and exactly which chemicals will be used to treat the water. You can't just strip stuff out of water. This water will be contaminated with bentonite during the drilling and boring process. Treated wastewater is not a scientifically sound or adequate description of the intended pollution. What happens if an accidental discharge occurs from the drilling or the holding ponds? Detailed and specific plans must be in place. I urge you to research all possible effects that these substances will have in well water, on developing brains of children, on the health of adult humans, and in the water on the health and behaviors of fish and other wildlife that will ingest these substances. You cannot trust Enbridge to do the research. That would be a glaring conflict of interest. Whether they are honest or not, that's a conflict of interest. Michigan has a history of horrible failures to protect water quality. We can't put the genie back in any of those bottles. Recall that the Snyder administration hastily appointed an emergency manager whose reckless decision poisoned Flint's water.
Give one minute.
The Snyder administration's rushed approval of the tunnel project is another reckless decision. Public agencies have complied with somebody's reckless decisions by supporting the patched-together sketchy plans that have failed to protect the citizens. This is an extremely vulnerable environment that includes dangerous methane gas, by the way. So this permit process must be given extra careful and detailed challenging at each stage. Intentional contamination of fresh water is completely unacceptable at a time when clean water is a highly valuable commodity. You must protect public health and water above any political or economic pressure to grant permits. Eagle must not grant this permit to deliberately contaminate the Straits of Mackinac. Thank you. And by the way, the comments have been just brilliant today.
Thank you. Okay, going down the list, next up is Ann Woydy, and then after Ann, Mike Ripley.
Hi, this is Ann Y. Woody. Thank you for this chance to testify. I appreciate the Eagle holding the hearing, although it is concerning that the technological issues are preventing many people who had signed up from testifying. I believe that this permit application is not ready for primetime. Eagle sent the first version back to the Enbridge drawing board when it was originally submitted. The modified application still fails to address many flaws and deficiencies in providing critical information for Eagle to assess this permit, which has been extensively documented by my fellow commenters today. In addition, although the Michigan Public Service Commission has committed to conduct an environmental review, Michigan's environmental agency has to date declined to commit to this. The separation of the two permits before Eagle alone points to a segmentation of the permit consideration that is a dangerous approach to the combined impact of these actions. Michigan's constitution calls for prevention of pollution, impairment, or destruction of the environment. The failure to require a comprehensive review of these combined permits flies in the face of the commitments of our governor, Governor Whitmer, in areas of environmental justice and climate change, and her personal commitments to embed these functions in Eagle. These get considered in the course of an environmental review, which has not been committed to, and the governor's commitment to address these issues is failing because of that failure to do an environmental review. It's not at all clear how Eagle will meet its obligations without a commitment to an environmental review. I'll note that some of the testifiers have made unverified assertions about economic benefits, which an environmental review would also consider, along with the social impacts and the environmental impacts. It's extremely important for Eagle to recognize that your legal requirement is to protect Michigan's environment, not to work with any applicant to figure out how to issue the permit to meet the desires of the applicant.
Give one minute.
To date, Enbridge has grossly failed to meet its requirements to qualify even to be considered at this time. Eagle must deny this permit. Negotiations for modifications of the grossly insufficient information that's been provided by this company cannot make up for their failure to take seriously the problems presented by this proposal. Again, I'm from the Lansing area, and I am a volunteer with the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club will submit comprehensive comments later on. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mike Ripley.
No Mike Ripley in attendance.
Okay, thanks, Les. Next on the list, Kate Glancy, then Barbara Stamiris.
No Kate Glancy.
It's Barbara Stamiris.
No Barbara.
Okay, working down our list, Randall Fernandez.
No Randall Fernandez.
Okay. On the list here, April Schwagerly.
Just a minute, just a minute, Jim.
Okay. And don't worry if there's...
There's an open mic. What was, I'm sorry, what's the name, please?
Randall Fernandez, you said, was not in attendance. April Schwagerly, S-C-H-W.
I have April. I'm muting April.
Okay. April, go ahead.
Hello, I'm April Schwagerly from Leland, Michigan. And I first wanted to read a couple of excerpts from the Eagle website. Under the Water Department, you say, "Protecting Michigan's Water, Eagle ensures Michigan's water resources remain clean. Water-related program staff provide for the protection, restoration, and conservation of Michigan's Great Lakes, inland lakes and streams, wetlands, and groundwater. It is in this moment Eagle can act to preserve these precious resources that were just listed. It is in this moment in time that we can act to prevent a future disaster that would impact our lives so drastically and in perpetuity. Let us consider this moment as historic, and one should be applauded as a decision that saved us from a massive and irreversible catastrophe. I plead for all generations present and future that all Enbridge permits be denied."
Okay, thank you. And just checking out my list, that was the last person on my list. Les, can you go back and check to see if there is a Sean Hammond? Sean, S. E. A. N. Hammond in attendance.
Jim, I have a Sean Hammond, but for some reason I cannot unmute his microphone.
Okay, Sean. So Sean Hammond, if you'd like, you can, there's a couple different ways you can submit your comments. You can, they're up on the screen here. I'm going to show that again for everybody. Also, if you want to try, it looks like we're having trouble unmuting you for some reason. It doesn't usually happen, but if you want to try to log off and come back in, that sometimes helps, could help as well. With that, what we're going to do now, so we've made our way through the list of people that, when they registered, said they wanted to make a comment, those people that were in attendance. Now, some people might have registered and did not actually attend. Now, at this point, what we're going to do is open it up, and I'm going to bring up my slide here again to remind everybody, if I can find it. Okay, making comments. So at this point, if you'd like to make a comment, I'm going to ask you to click the raise hand icon, and Les and I will try to go through as best we can, and unmute you in order. We'll call off your name as well as the person that'll be on deck. And again, you can make your comments. And again, this is for people who have not made a comment yet. If you are on the phone only, if you're on the phone only and you'd like to make a comment, you can click star nine. So hit star nine on your phone, and that shows us that you have your hand raised, and we'll call on you by your phone number. Okay, so again, if I call on your name, please remember to repeat your name and any organization that you represent. So I'm looking at my list of people with their hands raised. And also, you've got several here. The first one is Robert Buesler. Robert Buesler? You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, my name is Bob Beckler. I've been a geologist in the field for 33 years, and I have a master's degree in hydrogeology. I live only 15 miles south of the Straits, and I'm very familiar with the bedrock and glacial geology of Northern Michigan and the Eastern U.P. Some of the things that I'm concerned about are three things. One, the lack of preliminary geologic data concerns me. Every project I've been involved in in the past that required permits also required preliminary geologic data. And it seems like the 20 wells or the drill holes that were drilled seems very insufficient for a project of this magnitude. Also, I'm concerned about the fractured bedrock that they'll be tunneling through. Back during the Ice Ages, the bedrock was fractured from one mile thick glacier ice that, you know, compacted and fractured the bedrock down to 300 feet in places. So I'm concerned that this could cause a lot of difficulties. The fractured bedrock is prone to leakage and contamination, and could also cause tunnel failure. Also, the use of the unconsolidated sediments seems very flimsy to me for a tunnel. I'm also concerned about the extreme slope of the tunnel. The gorge beneath the straits is very deep, as we all know. And so this tunnel would be very steep on both sides. And from what I understand, from what I understand, it's going to be a V-shaped tunnel with the end of the V at the deepest part. So the slope of the tunnel and the pipeline seems awfully extreme to me. Thank you for letting me make a comment.
Okay, thank you. Next person with their hand raised, Berta Mazerve. Can you go ahead?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and restate your name.
Yes, my name is Berta Mazerve, and I live in Lake Anne, Michigan, and I'm representing myself. I want to say that I agree with everyone that came before me that is in disagreement with this project and with this permit. The question about where and how the wastewater will be treated is an important thing that we need to know more about, I feel. And I'm wondering what the plan will be if a spill of this slurry occurs. This slurry of clay and bitomite that will be used to build this tunnel is a serious pollutant. And if allowed to directly enter our lake will be a disaster to our fish, all the living organisms, and the environment along the shores and everywhere. This tunnel is not a safe project. Enbridge has lied and hidden facts in the past, and now what this permit does not account for a worst-case scenario and a spill. I say shame on the Michigan Chamber of Commerce for their support and other supporters. Michigan's economy and the need of this gas and propane is not needed from this line. There are others that deliver to Michigan. And the amount of taxes that are paid by Enbridge to Michigan will be a moot point when, and I say when, another spill occurs. Money cannot save our water once it is polluted. Also, considering clean energy switch that will be happening, we will not be needing a tunnel for these 99 years. And I'm asking Eagle, please do not allow this permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have someone actually who's on the phone, who's asked to make a comment by raising their hand. The phone number, because we don't have a name, ends in 613. Go ahead.
Randall Fernandez, City Manager of Marysville, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, thank you. Again, I apologize for not answering when I was called. I thought I was supposed to hit star nine instead of star six. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Again, there's two sides to every story. You have a difficult task. Here in Marysville, line five goes through us. We are in support of Enbridge and the permitting process. We have firsthand knowledge of dealing with this company. They've been above board with us. They just completed a new line from Marysville to the Sarnia, Ontario area. It was completed. They pulled the permits. They did what they said they were going to do. They met with my mayor and council several times. They met with our residents several times. Again, I don't live up north. I know people are very passionate on both sides of this issue. All I can do is say how they have interacted with our city, with our county, and it's all been above board. Again, they've hired professional geologists and engineers, people that are smarter than me. We do want you to hold Enbridge accountable. I think everybody on this phone, for or against, wants you to hold Enbridge accountable. But at the end of the day, as one gentleman said, Eagle and Enbridge and others have to work together to make this safe. So we are recommending that you allow the permit process to continue, to grant them their permits, but do hold them accountable. All eyes are on Enbridge. They know that. They have to do the right thing. Everybody is going to be looking over their shoulder, so to speak. I mean, they are aware of that. This should not be, you know, an eighteen Republican governor granted them the tunnel. Now we have a Democratic governor that disagrees. Hey, you know, I deal with politics every day. I know it's hard to take that out. But again, working together, can't we finally, right? There's a presidential debate. Can't we work together for the good of everyone instead of everybody picking sides, and you're wrong, or I'm right, or I'm right and you're wrong? So again, they have done what they said they were going to do here. Trust me, I'd be the first one calling in to lambaste them if they haven't followed through with the project that was supposed to happen here between Marysville and Sarnia, Ontario. It came off without a hitch. They kept us informed almost every single day. So again, we ask that you hold them accountable, but grant the permits and let this tunnel process continue. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next person with their hand raised is Joe Kramer. Joe Kramer.
Hi, Jim. My name is Joe Kramer. I'm a special pipeline rep for the Operating Engineers International. I support this project in Enbridge's request for the N.D.P.E.S. wastewater permit. The tunnel owner in Mackinac Strait will not only keep the Great Lakes safe from accidental release of the product due to potential ship traffic damage. There is a company willing to make improvements by eliminating it from the lake bed and putting it in a tunnel where it can be accessible for service and maintenance for years to come. This project is privately funded and will continue to generate tax revenue for the state of Michigan. With the improved technology of line coating, inspection of wells, and required internal monitoring, this new line will be able to continue to serve the residents of Upper and Lower Michigan with propane and other products that are used in their communities. The construction of this project will employ and provide much-needed, higher-paying jobs for the residents of Michigan. I am confident you will see its common sense approach to the protection of the environment and the continued service to the residents of Michigan. After looking at all the reports, I ask that you approve this permit. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Robert Byers. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Robert Byers. I'm from Kalamazoo, where Enbridge pumped millions of gallons of crude oil into our river. I work with many environmental groups, but today I am commenting as a living, breathing, water-loving human, and also on behalf of all living things. Enbridge is a bad-faith partner in Michigan and should not be permitted to destroy our environment and Great Lakes any further. First, I'd like to make a comment on the pro-pipeline lies I've heard in the public comments today. At best, the jobs created will only be temporary by line, Enbridge Tunnel Project. Number two, the propane needs of the U.P. could be easily met with one truck per week. This has been studied, and the results are widely available. Another point I'd like to make is I urge Eagle and the state of Michigan to deny Enbridge Wetlands' resource MPDES wastewater treatment permits to build a tunnel for line five oil pipeline through the public trust bottomlands of the Straits of Mackinac for the following reasons. One, Enbridge's application and project description is too narrow and does not consider the full effects, including cumulative effects and the existence of alternatives to the tunnel and wetlands-related project purpose, including the fact that line five and the tunnel are no longer necessary under Section 303-011-1 and 303-111-4B of the Wetland Protection Act. I urge Eagle to not permit Enbridge to destroy our environment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Nancy Potter. Nancy, you can go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Nancy Potter, a concerned citizen who lives in Leland County. I'm calling to voice my opposition to line five tile NPDES discharge permit request. The role of Eagle is to protect our Great Lakes and environment. So denying this permit is the right response to Enbridge. Enbridge is requesting to release up to 5 million gallons a day of treated wastewater back into Lake Michigan. Excuse me. And they haven't made the treatment process clear, such as what they are going to be doing with the water treatment additives, or how much they are going to be using, or which chemicals will be used. And there's no consideration of the cumulative effects of this discharge to the lakes and wetlands. Enbridge is still working on the treatment system, so nothing is known for certain about the possible toxicity of the discharge. Enbridge paints a rosy outlook for how efficient their three-part water filtration system is going to operate. But what plans do they have in place for when this system fails to work as planned? Even at best, 5 million gallons of treated wastewater a day or up to 14 million gallons during a storm event will add some chemicals to the Great Lakes, and any amount is too much to be permitted. If there are issues with the filtration system, how long will it take for Enbridge to acknowledge the problems to Eagle? What incentive will they have for reporting? They may, they pay a fine and continue business as usual when they get caught. Enbridge's transparency record is an F. For example, they didn't disclose information about the many missing support anchors, which they were aware of in 2003, but didn't disclose until 2017, and only revealed this knowledge nine months after a documented report came out. In 2017, they also lied about the protective coating until a video in their possession showed areas of missing coating and revealed the company had known of these bare spots since 2014.
Give one minute.
Another issue of concern is that Enbridge hasn't said how and where the treated bentonite slurry will be disposed, nor has Enbridge revealed what the protocols are to prevent an accidental release of bentonite slurry into Lake Michigan, or how they would recover it from the lake. Polluting the straits through an accidental leak of bentonite slurry and other chemicals used in the boring process could cause a worse environmental disaster than an oil leak. This tunnel and pipeline project is not in the public interest. We don't owe Enbridge this permit. They are doing us no favors, and we must not continue to acquiesce to them as if they hold all the trump cards. This is a Canadian corporation's risky project. The state of Michigan should not accept the risk. And overall, there is too much chance and enough uncertainty to continue with this unnecessary project for the purpose of pumping unnecessary fossil fuels through the straits. And in keeping with Governor Whitmer's executive order on building a carbon-free economy, please deny this permit request. Thank you for hosting this comment period. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple more hands raised. Next person with their hand up is Lauren Sargent. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Sargent. I am a fifth-generation Michigander. I am descended from fruit farmers near Mears, Michigan, and my sergeant relatives were affected by the Enbridge line 6B spill into the Kalamazoo River. I'm not a geologist, but I am a retired clinical psychologist, and I know that the best predictor of behavior is past behavior. If Citizens United can determine that corporations are people, we can determine that Enbridge is a liar, an obfuscator of fact, and cannot be relied upon to protect our greatest resources, which are our water and our people. I'm a member of Washtenaw 350. One of the things that we say is that we should not be building any long-term infrastructure for fossil fuels. I'm hearing apologists from Chamber of Commerce and so forth saying, "Oh, my, how wonderful. Enbridge is willing to build a tunnel for their own product. Should I be applauded for buying my own car?" This tunnel is a vehicle for Enbridge, period. And we're talking about jobs and all kinds of stuff like that? Well, let me tell you. Our number-one source of every kind of job you can imagine relies on our water. And Eagle is the Department of Environment, the Great Lakes, and Energy. It's not the Department of making sure that private corporations can earn money at our expense and, oh, create some jobs in the short term. Well, I don't think that we want our jobs' future to be cleaning up or trying to clean up the results of their bad behavior when they are when they are insufficiently indemnified and will surely walk away as soon as profits fall or they, or not, or when they create an environmental nightmare. We already know that we have increased storms and frequency. We have increased lake levels. We'll have a spill of this toxic water. We don't even know exactly what's in it, but we do know that the bentonite is an environmental nightmare. We also know that Enbridge grossly underestimated the cost of the cleanup of the Kalamazoo, which is ongoing. Please deny this permit. Please stand up for us. Please stand up for our environment, for our Great Lakes, for an energy future that is safe and reliable. The world is getting off of oil. We need to do so as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Emily Baker. Emily Baker? Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I'm Emily Baker. I'm another current citizen from Benzie County. Another concerned citizen from Benzie County. Well, I primarily, you read what I know about the situation with Enbridge from sources brought in by Flo and Oil and Water Don't Mix. And I'm surprised that Jim Olson, who heads Flo, and Michael Zinsky didn't show. He who had done a presentation on Oil and Water Don't Mix didn't show up. But if they had, I'm sure they would have a lot to say. And by and large, the concerns I would have were what the people against the pipeline already raised. And there are a few other factors that might need consideration. Besides the situation with wastewater treatment, the slurry, a wave in storm energy from the changes in climate, there are things like that. Those they might want to consider, the part in her construction which helps transportation and reseeding of the wetlands. You could stand to investigate into these as possible vectors of invasive species that, well, and beyond that. And in any case, I also suggest that Eagle folks at Enbridge for further information as to how their plans had changed since that risk assessment. For instance, that they're suggesting that they're cutting corners by burrowing through other sediments besides bedrock. And of course, there's also a need to put the operating of the current pipeline on hold until the situation's sorted out either way. I mean, that pipeline is still very badly damaged from the scraping of ship hulls and anchors and could likely go in for more. So I guess that basically sums up what I have heard. And I hope that will be taken into account either way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emily Baker. Just to want to let you know, a couple times during your comment, you broke up a little bit. I think you might be having a little bit of internet connectivity issues over there. So if you want, you may want to submit if you have written comments. Make sure you submit them in full, either at the email address up on the screen there or through My Waters directly on the screen. Okay. Last hand raised right now, and I just want to remind people, if you have a comment, you can click the raise hand button and we'll call on you if you haven't made a comment already. It's a phone person, phone caller, area code 906. Then the numbers are 325 at the end. You are muted. So go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you please state your name and any organization you're with, please?
Yes, I will. Joe Stevens. I'm a county commissioner from Dickinson County. I would like to go on record as being in favor of permitting number one and permit number two. I've listened to all the comments, and I'm kind of in the minority here, but I really think we have to go forward with the tunnel on Line 5. So our county board is totally in favor of continuing with Line 5 and building the tunnel. So we are 100% in favor of permitting number one and number two. And also, I think the guy, the person who spoke about Eagle and Enbridge working together, making sure this is done correctly, I think is the most important comment I've heard, that between everybody working together, this should be done. And also, another quick comment. The comments that people are making about the propane and the cost of propane and the UP, and it's not that big of a deal. Well, it really is. There's thousands of people in the UP and all over Michigan that rely on cheap propane. If Line 5 goes away, our costs are going to be either eliminated or going to go up, and even the supply could be eliminated. So again, I'm all in favor of going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking on my board here. And currently, I have no other hands raised. So I'm going to give it another few seconds here to see if anybody else would like to make a comment today. And remind you, there's other times to make comments. We've got a couple other hearings and also on the screen. If you don't want to voice your comment verbally, you can submit it via email or through My Waters directly up on your screen and also in your chat box. If you look in your chat button, click that button, you'll see links directly to the comment page to make your comment. So I'm doing a last call for hands raised if you have not made a comment already. And I see we do have a hand, Jean Champagne. Go ahead, please. Please repeat your name and any organization you're with. I guess, lest did they just? Maybe they didn't want to make a comment. Okay, that happens sometimes.
I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes. Okay, Jean Champagne. Okay, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, Jean Champagne, a little bit of the UP in Big Bay, a little bit north of Marquette, and I have a camp in Grand Marais. And I wasn't planning on commenting today until I heard the recent comment before this. County Commissioner from Dickinson County talking about UP supply prices, and we're all going to freeze up here. I had been in contact with my propane suppliers in both Big Bay and Grand Marais because the Rapid River facility was shut down for most of the summer. I was starting to ask them about storage issues and this and that. I follow the UP Energy Cast Force meetings on propane and went to the meetings and read their report in full. So I was asking about storage. And basically, they are not relying on propane. The market economy is shifting. It's adapting to reality that there's so many unknowns about Line 5. The market for their oil is mostly going to the east coast of Canada for shipment overseas. We just happen to be a waste stop. So they are already taking precautions to get their supplies from other suppliers downstate. One's actually being rolled up here from Lansing, others from Wisconsin. They assured me if Line 5 goes down, they will have ample supply of propane. They're already doing it. My prices have not risen. They have. I haven't noticed it. It's that miniscule. So the whole idea of the UP, us poor Ubers freezing death, running out of propane, is a false narrative. We don't need Line 5. We're basically privatized profit and socialized risk for a foreign company. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm opening it up for any other hands raised, if people have not made a comment yet. Okay. Last, I'm just going to have you do a quick check down our list to make sure we don't have any other hands raised. And...
At present, I do not see any new hands raised at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And I want to remind everybody again about the opportunities. Today was not the only time to provide a comment. There are other ways and other hearings. If you'd like to make a comment in the chat button, if you click that, you'll find the direct links to providing a written comment as well as the address for submitting written comments for the mail, if you'd like, as well as an email. For those people who are still on the phone, I will read off the email address. If you'd like to send in an email, it's e g l e dash Enbridge, E N B R I D G E dash comments@michigan.gov. There's also a mailing address, and I'll read that off for the people who are on the phone. It's Water Resources Division, P O Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7958. Up on the screen right now, I'm showing upcoming hearings. Like I said, this wasn't the only hearing. There's going to be another hearing on October 6th at 6:00 PM. Not seeing any hands raised, I am going to read our closing comments here for this hearing. Bear with me. Okay, so as a reminder, the department will hold the second public hearing on NPDES permit on October 6th at 6:00 PM. If you do not make comments today or wish to make additional comments, you may do so at that time. Also, the public comment period for accepting written comments is open until October 19th, 2020. We will consider all comments received prior to making a final permit decision. Written comments may be submitted online in our My Waters database. Directions can be found in documents you can access in the webinar. So you've got those links. Our comments can also be submitted to Jessica Stiles at the following address, which I read off. I'll read it again. Water Resources Division, Eagle, P O Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7958. Or at the following email address, eagle, e g l e, dash Enbridge, dash comments@michigan.gov. Thank you for your comments and cooperation, and we appreciate your interest and that you took time to be here today. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you again. So just wrapping up, I want to see if our Eagle staff, people on the line, anybody have any comments you'd like to make? Terrick, Teresa, Christine?
Just thanks for attending and your comments today. And remember, you can continue to send comments into the My Waters link or attend the next public hearing, which is next week.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody. This meeting was recorded. And again, you can go to michigan.gov/linefive for additional information. If you liked it, you can find all this there as well as recordings from past meetings. Thank you all for joining us and have a great rest of your day. Thank you.